Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's Planning Commission meeting. Happy 2012. First order of business, want to welcome everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting, to those who are here as well as those who are watching. We certainly welcome your participation. And one order of business is that if you would like to speak tonight, we do ask that you complete speaker cards. I wish I had an example, but they are the cards. There they go. And we will need those for the record if you plan on speaking on any item on tonight's agenda. Second is if you need copies of any of our reports, they're available in the lobby, excuse me. And other than that, we just welcome your attendance tonight. Can we have roll call? Commissioner Bourgeois.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Here.
Commissioner Talisfor.
Here.
Commissioner Erickson.
Here.
Vice Chair Jensen.
Here.
Chair Saak. Here. And can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
Okay, Commissioners, first order of business, we have a draft of minutes from our last meeting on December 14th. Are there any questions of that draft? If not, could I get a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes of December 14th.
Okay, do I have a second? A second from Commissioner Talisfor. Any comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Next order, written communications. We actually have two desk items, one for Agenda Item 2, one for Item Number 3. If you need some more time before we get to these, just give me a quick nod and I'll make sure that we give you that adequate time. We have one requested continuance for Item Number 1, which was at 16828 Kennedy Road. Actually, madam, do we need a motion? Yep, I need a reminder to continue.
Yes, you do.
Okay. Could I get a motion to continue this item? Commissioner Jensen.
I move to continue Item Number 1, 16828 Kennedy Road, Minor Residential Development Application, MR 11-010, which is also, as I understand, at Hillbrook School. And the staff and the applicant have requested a continuance to February 22nd, and I so move.
Can I get a second? Commissioner, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I was looking at Commissioner Jensen. So I have a motion and I have a second. And any comments? Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. It passes. And anyone opposed? It passes unanimously. Okay. And Subcommittee Reports. In addition to being on the Commission, all of our Committee, Commission members are also Committee members. There are three. And this is an opportunity for us to just give an update on what has transpired since our last meeting. I believe the General Plan Committee, as well as the Historic Preservation, has met. Commissioner Bourgeois, will you provide tonight's update on general plan?
Thank you. The General Plan Committee meeting met earlier this evening to discuss, it was basically an informational meeting where we were preparing ourselves as we develop the Affordable Housing Overlay Zones, which are part of our new housing element. And so there were two parts. One was just a review of the State Density Bonus Law and how it works in conjunction with the Town Housing Assistance Program to understand those distinctions. And secondly, we had a guest speaker from Mid Peninsula Housing who gave a presentation on developing affordable housing in the Bay Area and understanding the jurisdictions and how to better facilitate affordable housing in our community. So it's basically informational in preparation for the development of Affordable Housing Overlay Zones.
Thank you. Any questions of Commissioner Bourgeois? Okay. And we also had Historic Preservation. Commissioner Erickson, would you like to provide an update?
The Historic Preservation Committee also met this afternoon, had three items on its agenda, and recommended approval of some exterior modifications to the theater downtown that had been proposed by the new owners. Continued an item at 301 University Avenue to a future meeting and provided, we hope, some helpful feedback to the architect and applicant for our project at 106 Masole Avenue.
Thank you. Commissioner Erickson, any questions? Okay, great. And now we are at verbal communications. This is an opportunity for those in the audience to speak on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. I currently have no speaker cards and it looks, it appears as if, this is for the, for any item not on tonight's agenda, if you'd like to speak. Okay, if you could just come to the podium and then do submit a speaker card afterwards? And to all those who are planning on speaking, when you get to the podium, if you could just state your name and address before you speak so that we could have that adequately transcribed, thanks.
My name is Patty Elliott, and I live at 269 Marchmont Drive. Tonight I wanted to talk to you about the Hillbrook School situation that's going on in our neighborhood. Hillbrook School operates under a conditional use permit granted by the town. The town is responsible to require compliance with that CUP. I'm here tonight to notify the Planning Commission that over the past few years, Hillbrook School has routinely ignored and violated several of the important conditions in its CUP that were put in place to preserve the character of the neighborhood and to mitigate the traffic burden and dangerous conditions caused by that traffic. Specifically, in the past few years, Hillbrook has routinely ignored and violated Condition Number 12 of the CUP, which limits the number of vehicles to 65 during the morning drop-off and afternoon pickup periods. The clear intent of the car cap was to limit student traffic to no more than 165 car trips and to give teeth to Hillbrook's voluntary offer to carpool. The CUP requires specific periods during which Hillbrook students would be dropped off and picked up. The neighborhood anticipated the large volume of traffic during these periods between 7:30 a.m., 8:30 a.m., and between 2:30 and 3:45 p.m. In all other periods, typically there would be almost no traffic. With no input from the neighborhood and no consultation with the town, a few years ago, Hillbrook's new head of the school decided to give his own new interpretation to that car cap provision, making the car cap meaningless. He eliminated the protection for the neighborhood, and now the neighborhood is inundated with Hillbrook traffic virtually all day long for all year long, including the summer. Rather than accept the responsibility to comply with the car cap and limit student traffic, Hillbrook has designed its schedule and programs to spread traffic throughout the day and a maneuver which the car cap was specifically designed to prevent. Hillbrook's disingenuous claim that it is in compliance because they do not exceed the 165 car cap during that specified period is just one of the many examples of how Hillbrook's leaders play fast and loose with the CUP requirements that they are required to comply with. They have hijacked the neighborhood and caused serious traffic hazards. I'm going to ask for another 30 seconds if I can.
Actually, I am going to have to limit you to the three minutes. And because it's verbal communications, one of the things that we are, we cannot do is we cannot comment on any of the items that you mentioned. You probably are aware of that.
I understand that. 10 seconds. My request is this, that the Commission instruct the town staff to require Hillbrook to provide all of the documentation of the programs it has been running and those that it has allowed outside groups to run, including facility use agreements, joint operating agreements, leases, and other documentation of the relationships between Hillbrook and outside organizations. The enrollment numbers have exceeded its CUP.
I believe that's been your 10 seconds.
The car cap has been exceeded.
Thank you.
I ask you to require the town to.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Require.
I have to cut you off.
Provide that information. Thank you.
Okay. Public hearing number one, as we mentioned earlier, has been continued to February 22nd. We are now at Item Number 2, Architecture and Site Application S-11-059, located at 15220 Oak Ridge Way. And Ms. Savage, will you provide tonight's staff report?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. There is a desk item for this application. It contains additional public comments. The subject parcel is one of three lots created in 2007 through a minor subdivision and currently contains a shed, previously used vehicular access, and fencing. The applicant is requesting approval for a single-family residence with a detached pool house and pool. The project was referred to the Planning Commission because at 4,597 square feet and an FAR or floor area ratio of .23, the project creates the largest home in the immediate neighborhood in terms of square footage and FAR. The residential design guidelines provide general design principles that include relating a structure's size and bulk to those in the immediate neighborhood. Although it is proposed to be the largest in the immediate neighborhood, the project is designed with architectural interest and form that is compatible with the eclectic neighborhood. Also, the project does not exceed the property's maximum floor area ratio. The Planning Commission should consider if the proposed floor area is compatible with the neighborhood in terms of FAR and square footage. To address neighbor concerns, staff included recommended conditions of approval requiring privacy tree screening and restricting planting in the easement along the southern property line. Also included is a condition requiring that the applicant revise the plans to ensure that no structures or structural features, including eaves, are constructed over the 15-foot wide easement located along the southern property line. The town received three additional public comments regarding a vernal pool, drainage, groundwater, trees, and construction hours and noise. In regards to the vernal pool, for several years, the Parks and Public Works Department has discussed this matter with the neighbor and has never been provided evidence to support the vernal pool concerns. In additions, the elements that are indicative of a vernal pool are not evident on the subject property. In regards to drainage issues, surface drainage concerns were raised when the subject parcel was created. The subdivision approval required a public storm drain to be constructed in the public right-of-way to prevent public street runoff from entering private properties. The project is designed to limit post-development surface runoff to pre-development surface runoff flow rates. And pursuant to the conditions of approval, the project would be required to obtain a grading permit at which time detailed drainage calculations would be required. In regards to the groundwater issue for a cellar and basement as part of the project, four boreings were drilled in the cellar and basement area to a depth of over 16 feet. No groundwater was encountered in these boreings, and the depth of the basement proposed to be roughly 10 feet below grade is not expected to have large impacts. In regards to tree impacts, as discussed in the staff report, the proposed project was reviewed by the town's arborist. His review and recommendations are included in the staff report. In regards to construction hours and noise, the limitations are regulated pursuant to town code and our standard requirements. Staff erroneously included extra text in the earthquake-induced liquefaction condition. If the deciding body finds merit with the application, the condition should be revised to read as noted what is noted in the desk item. This concludes staff presentation, and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Savage. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Bourgeois?
Thank you for your report, Ms. Savage. I'm curious, did the town, in the numerous conversations and site visits regarding the vernal pool, was it, was an expert brought in, like a biologist or hydrologist, to take a look at the site?
Not that the town is aware of, but the applicant may have further information.
But the town didn't have anyone look at it? Just, it was the town Parks and Public Works staff that determined that it wasn't an issue?
Town staff did, based on the physical characteristics of the site.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. Okay, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and open the public input portion. At this time, I'm going to ask the applicant, I don't have a card, but I believe it's Robert Hirst, Mr. Spalding, if you could submit a speaker card. And you will have.
Did I hand it out?
Actually, we do not have.
I just gave some desk items.
One moment, please.
Okay, I want to start with the drainage issue. I handed out.
And Mr. Spalding, if you could just introduce yourself.
Chris Spalding, architect, 801 Camellia Street, Berkeley. So I wanted to address the comments from the neighbors, first about the drainage and the underground water. The desk item I just handed out was a letter from the soils engineer talking about that he found no evidence of subsurface flow. And due to the, he tested the, how quickly the ground percolates and what type of, and the type of soil it is, he doesn't think that there's likely to be a large subsurface flow. And that, really what the neighbors are concerned about is a surface flow problem, which mainly was mitigated by the storm drain system put in as a condition of the subdivision. What surface flow remains, we've got the preliminary grading plan as part of your applica, I mean, your packet, and the civil engineer has designed it so that there's stormwater retention and metering, so the surface flow will be the same post-development as it is pre-development. So there really shouldn't be any surface or underground water issues. The next thing I wanted to talk about was the size of the house, and I wanted to quibble a little bit with the town's policy of immediate neighbor being just two houses to either side. So I drew this drawing, and I went three houses, and I also the house behind. And also, in the staff report, she lists our house, living area is 4,597. That includes, however, that number includes the accessory building and includes the basement. So our, on my chart, in the handout there, the house comparison size, the living area of the main house is 4,189, not 4,597. And of those houses, in that diagram of which our house is the center, we're actually the fourth-largest house, not the first, and we're the second-largest in FAR, not the first. Also, nobody's really complained about the architecture, but, I mean, the whole, the whole purpose of the way it was designed was to, there's no two-story walls, all the second stories are tempered by the first-story roof lines. The second story is much smaller than the first story. It's got hip roofs. You've seen the story poles out there. Some people might think it's large. I thought it fit in pretty well. There's no, the way of the topography, you know, that site is smaller than the adjacent ones, so those houses are set far away. So, you know, there's really no immediate neighbors except for the one house that left. And so in terms of privacy, we were, wanted to pay particular attention to that house. That's this house right here. So if you notice on our second story, we only have one small window looking that direction, and we're going to plant, as the staff put as a condition, and as my client agreed with the neighbor, is we're going to plant screening along the property line to block the ground floor windows from, so they don't look into their backyard. Some other issues brought up by the neighbors was the big oak tree on the rear property, but that's well too far away to be affected by this construction. Also, the historic nature of that, the house to the rear, again, that access to that house is from Wild Way, and this house really doesn't affect that at all. And lastly, the easement, which you'll hear a lot about tonight, our proposal does not block that easement at all, and the only construction we have in the easement is our driveway, which is consistent with the use of that easement, is in the easement, but they can still, the neighbors can still use it as an ingress and egress easement across the driveway of this house. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Spalding. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Just to help me get a better understanding of the map, when I was out there looking at the property, when I went down to the end of the block and I looked to the right, it appeared there was a gate blocking one.
Down this way or down?
Well, I came in Buena Vista, and I turned onto, I guess.
Oak Ridge.
Oak Ridge. And so coming from Buena Vista, then turning down, going back by the property in question and continuing on, you have two choices.
Right.
You can go to the right. Well, when I looked to the right, it appeared there was a gate.
Yeah, I think this road has been, is no longer in use. Still shows on the APN maps, but I think that's closed off.
Okay, that's why I thought, it looks like you could drive there, and I saw a rather substantial gate preventing that.
Yeah, I don't think this is a public way anymore.
So when you define the neighborhood, you really do have a problem, because when I was out there, this house looks considerably larger than what I would consider the neighborhood. So when you're talking about, oh, no, it's not, which houses are you including to come up with that?
This house is 12,000 square feet. This one is 34, I think.
Well, the 12,000-square-foot house is hardly part of that neighborhood, is it?
It's immediate house to the rear.
Because you can't access, that's an interesting neighborhood. You can't even get there and you can't see it.
No, this is, this is the access right here. To get into this house, you come from Wild Way.
And you open a gate?
Yeah. That, yeah.
Okay.
A lot of people have gates.
I don't, but that's okay.
Commissioner O'Donnell, did you have, did that answer? Okay.
Well, I was going to point out the other houses, 15270 Oak Ridge Way, that's this one, is 4638, not including garages, and 15251, that's that one, is 4232, not including garages. So both of those are larger.
Follow up with that. The 4,200 one you just pointed to, is that single-story or two-story?
I think, you know, I don't know. That might be a one and a half or.
Looks like a single-story from the road, so.
Commissioners, Commissioner Talisfor?
I have two questions. One is about the, I understand the trees are quite, are going to be part of this. I mean, they're an important part of this design because they're going to somehow provide privacy for the neighbor. Is that true? Where are they going to be?
The privacy planning is right here.
Okay. So my question is, they were not called out in your project, in staff report here.
Right.
Do you know what they are? Have you met with the neighbors?
I believe they've come to agreement with the neighbor of what type of tree they want to plant. I believe they've come to agreement with the neighbor of what type of tree they want to plant.
But we don't have a landscape plan, is that right?
That's right. This happened after we submitted for-
Okay, so that's a little hard for us to evaluate that. Also, the other, because I'd like to see the landscape plan. I mean, it would be nice to know what we're getting. But, talking about the architecture, when I came to that neighborhood today, that neighborhood is a very country-like neighborhood. And what, the characteristics that stand out to me are single-story, swept back, low slung roofs, eaves. And I would like you to explain to me, the form that you've used for your architecture, how that relates to what I see as the neighborhood.
When you say that, the, there's a lot of two-story houses in there.
Not a lot, but there are, there's one at that end that you pointed at, that's true. The other one is a story and a half. But those went in before any design guidelines were established. And the one next door was built-
These two are one-story. Right. But those are huge lots, those were built back in the 50s or 60s. I don't know that we can really compare that to these. This is two stories, that's two stories, that's one-story. Which one? This one's one-story. Yeah, this one's two.
Miss-
17070. Yeah.
Commissioner Talisfer, do you have more questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Bouchard.
Thank you, Mr. Spalding. And one of the suggestions in the residential design guidelines is consistency in street frontage. And you're caught between two different approaches. Lots of, houses that are pushed back on huge lots. And then, what seems to be the more standard pattern, which is up toward the front of the street, which you mimicked. Just, given the size of what you're proposing, and the odd configuration of being between these two sized lots for pri-, the privacy concerns we're hearing, did you consider pushing that house to the rear of the lot? And just help me through your thought process there.
Yes. Actually, the, if you look on our plan, we show the house at 30 feet front setback. It's labeled 30-foot front proposed, but it's actually drawn at 35. It's supposed, we intended to put it at 35, and I mislabeled it. So, we would actually ask the commission to allow us to have it at 35, push it back an extra five feet.
I was actually thinking about pushing it a lot further back, so you're not immediately adjacent and impacting-
Well, we can't push it a lot further back, because the lot's not very deep. I mean, we're, we're, you know, legally, we could push it back to there, but then we, then there's no backyard. I mean, we can't, we can't do this, it's impossible. You can't, you can't, you can't require us to do what this house is, because it's physically impossible.
I'm not trying to require you to do anything, I'm asking your thought process of the optimal place to position the house on the lot.
Well, the owner wanted to set it back a little further than normal, to 35 feet. But he wanted to protect, have a backyard, he's got two young kids.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Spalding, I'm going to let others speak, and then afterwards, you'll have time to rebut. I currently only have one speaker card, and so if anyone else would like to speak, just submit it to either end. But at the moment, I have one for John Livingston. Is Mr. Livingston here? Oh, okay. Okay, so I don't have a, I don't have a John Livingston here. Oh, okay, so you're first up to speak. And just a reminder to all those who are planning to speak, you have three minutes. And afterwards, if you could just stay for, if there are any questions afterwards.
I'm fine if you want to let the other speakers go first.
No, go ahead.
Well, good evening, Honorable Chair, Planning Commission, and staff. My name's John Livingston, and I'm representing the neighbor to the rear on the very large parcel. That's Mr. Chen at 17020 Wild Way. I'd like to ask the commission to consider continuing this project to provide time for Mr. Chen to discuss, have a dialogue with the applicant and architect. Unfortunately, he couldn't make this meeting due to the New Year's celebration, which is very important this week. The existing plans already do need to be modified to meet Staff Condition Number 13 due to a portion of the structure that's hanging over the existing easement that Mr. Chen has egressed to the rear portion of his lot. We had asked the Planning Commission to not approve the plans until the changes have been made and reviewed by the neighbors and the Planning Commission. One of the concerns of the proposed design is that it requires use of the easement for its day-to-day functions. The design of the front yard and the driveway incorporate the easement. There's very limited parking available, other than in the easement. The plans currently propose three garage parking spaces, but the one garage will need to be altered or reduced somehow because of the portion that hangs into the easement. Only the parking available is in front of the two-car garage. So, more than likely, the area where the easement is, is where it will be, people will park, unless you, you'd have to constantly jockey around the cars in the court if you, you know, didn't get in the habit of parking in the easement. And also, with the two twin young boys, that would, maybe the area versus the pool in the back, where you would play the basketball and the roller, played sports. So, Mr. Chen sees that this may be a problem if you kind of imagine a large landscape truck going down that easement. I mean, basically, goes across the front of the brand-new house, down the side of the house, because the house is built right to the 15-foot setback on the easement. That's very awkward at best, and the design sets a stage up for safety issues with the kids, and just future problems. The easement is very similar to a flaglot situation. Typically, in a flaglot situation, the easement's very obvious and identified by a fence, and kind of protected. In addition, the back balcony has a view into Mr. Chen's backyard of his pool and spa, and there's privacy issues. And finally, the staff report says, throughout the staff report, that the size of the proposed project is not compatible with the immediate neighborhood. And based on this, it would be reasonable to conclude that the overall design of the project does not meet the town general plan, as stated in the staff report. So, given the privacy, the encroachment, and the lack of a landscape plan, Mr. Chen would like to see this application continued, so he can have further dialogue with the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston. And Commissioner O'Donnell?
Have you read the easement?
Yes, I have. It starts at the front of the lot, and goes all the way to the rear. A 15-foot swath, just, you know, really taking the usable portion of the lot. It goes right from here to here. So, this-
Mr. Livingston, could you take the microphone with you?
So, you can see on this plan, this is the easement right here. And on the other slide, this is Mr. Chen's property. And, you know, it's the largest property, and he uses the easement for all the maintenance back here. So, the easement allows him to get to this portion of his yard. And it's 15-foot wide, and just goes right down the entire side.
Let me ask you this question. Apparently, he has shut off Wild Way, and that is the access to his home, or his property, right?
Yes.
So, he has, I don't know how wide Wild Way is there, nor do I understand how he shut it off. But he has a large gate there, and that's how he normally accesses his property. So, the easement you're describing to me is, would appear to be not very often used.
It's used for the maintenance of the back of the site. It's, the front of the house has all the nice pavers, and that's not where you'd have the muddy trucks and what have you. That easement, right now, they've put gravel down, and they just maintain it for the, you know, the working access.
Well, the easement should by its own terms provide for its use, and you say there would normally be a fence. If there were a fence, I guess it wouldn't be an easement, would it?
Well, the fence would, right now, the easement's kind of part of the functional design. I feel that they need that easement to back up out of the garage, for any kind of parking, play area. It's not segregated from the design. So, whenever, it's not like a typical flag where you may have a fence going down, so it's kind of like a private easement going back.
So, you're anticipating a problem, is that it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
On that line, you mentioned that, is there anything currently on the easement? You were pointing to Condition Number 13, saying that as a reason for continuing it until it's resolved. But as I did the site visit, I didn't find anything actually on the easement. Are you aware of?
No, right now, it's a vacant lot with just, actually, they use more of almost the center of the lot because of the trees. That's where they've, you know, placed gravel. But the, what I was referring to is the existing plans need to be slightly modified, because they have a portion of the single-car garage is encroaching into the easement on the plans. So, staff added Condition Number 13 to amend that with the approval of the Community Development Director.
And one more question. If you take that, if you put the original plans back up, I believe it's Slide A1, could you point out what is encroaching?
It would be this area right here. The eve of that garage is encroaching. That's just showing the wall line, which is built right at the 15 feet.
The eve, okay. Okay. Commissioner Smith?
Sir, if you could take the microphone and maybe go to the first slide, that is not the one that's up there now, but the one that Mr. Spalding gave us. And then, if you could go over to the site where the back balcony is, and just mark for us where you, where Mr. Chen's pool area is. Because it's not, I'm looking at a structure to the right of the main house, but I don't know that that's the pool.
So, he has his pool structures approximately right here with a spa on this end, and various outdoor features with the gas fireplace area. And of course, the view from the rear balcony and the second story, this is, you know, just the perfect view.
Sloping down? Sloping up?
It slopes up to this fence, but with the second-story balcony, it does have a line of sight. If you stand in Mr. Chen's backyard, you can see all the story poles very clearly.
And how many feet from that balcony? I mean, just guesstimate for me, from that balcony to the barbecue area, let's just say.
Over 100 feet.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Talisfer?
Regarding, regarding that easement, again. So, is there another way, is there another road up to that property in the back that you were showing us? Where the pool is, and those-
No, not really. I mean, you have his formal entrance with all of the pavers, and your typical circular driveway court. And then, you have stairs and kind of a cascading landscape, more stairs, and eventually, the pool. And then, it steps up to the spa. So, it's not something you would really drive a vehicle over and through to get to this area of the lot.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I believe I heard you say you thought the eaves might encroach upon the easement, notwithstanding that Condition Number 13 says it can't.
The eaves do encroach over the easement right now, and-
You read Condition 13, right?
Right, and Condition 13 says you'll have to fix that later on.
Before they build it?
Right.
Okay, so if it doesn't encroach, it doesn't encroach, right?
Right. In other words, there'll be some changes to the plans, whether they, you know, just lop off the eve, or pull the whole garage over a little bit to keep the eaves conforming then with the rest of the project. There'll be some sort of changes.
And at the moment, your client is driving down the middle of this property, not on the easement, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? And one other question I had, has there been no communication between your client and the property owner?
The, there has been some communication, and a letter was submitted that's included in your packet.
Okay. Because when you were, another reason you were asking for continuance was to, was for a communication. But there has been discussion.
There's been some communication, but we would definitely like to, now that, you know, he got the formal notice, you know, the 10 days prior to this event, and we've looked at the plans online. But, you know, we would like to have some time with his architect, Chris Spalding, and look at it in more detail, especially if there was a landscape plan, that would also be great to see.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker, oh, sure.
When you, you represent Mr. Chen.
Yes.
Are you an attorney?
No, I'm not, I'm a planning consultant.
Okay, and you're, you gave us your address, I forget, where are you located?
In San Jose.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. The next speaker is Jean Hardwick.
Jean Hardwick, 15231 Oak Ridge Way. Don't have any issues about the house, per se, but as far as the underground water issue, your people in the town don't live there, and they don't, aren't familiar, especially in a dry year. There is water, I can hear it under my house, and I'm right across from the site. You hear it in winter. When there's a good rainfall, and it's not surface, it's actually underground. But anyway, that aside, if there are house floods, it's not my issue, so I don't care. What my main concern is, they, I now know they're going to have a three-car garage, that's good to know, but parking, and when they start construction, especially because your other agenda item is Buena Vista Avenue, we have a huge parking issue along those streets, because what you can't really see on Oak Ridge is there's a blind turn, a sharp, blind turn onto Wild Way. We have a problem, a constant problem. I've been complaining to the town for years to park, to post signage for no parking, because people park on the street, on the street. The part of the street you're supposed to drive your car on, not park off, you know? So, it's an ongoing problem. And all I want the town to do is to pay attention to both Buena Vista and Oak Ridge during construction, that they don't park in front of my mailbox, as my one neighbor used to do consistently, and block my mail from being delivered, and park out on the street where you have to zigzag through, or the fire truck can't make the corner, because we do have elderly people, I won't say names, but anyway, that we do have emergency vehicles that need to come down that street on occasion. And it's important, they have unimpeded access, and that's part of the fire code, and nobody pays attention. So, when you're looking at this project, please make sure they don't park on the street. They park off the street, on the property, or on the side where there is allowed parking. That's all I ask.
Thank you, Ms., oh, Ms. Hardwick, you have a question? Commissioner Bouchard?
Thank you for your comments. I just want to clarify, you live directly across the street?
Yes, 15231 in-
And you don't have any problem with the size, height, or appearance of the house?
It's not that everybody would like it to stay the way it is. I would like it to stay the way it is. I would like to see something smaller, but it's their land. I'm not that kind of person that, you know, has an issue with that. But I do have an- have an issue when it doesn't allow me access to my property or it's blocked off by construction vehicles. I know it's going to happen. I know it will happen and I know that the PD will do absolutely squat because they have in the past and they've told me. They don't care.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, the next speaker is Charles Tripp.
Hi, my name's Charles Tripp, uh, one five two, uh, four one Oak Ridge Way. I'm across the street and one house towards Los Gatos from the proposed construction. Um, I have my objections to the house, the size of it, how it doesn't really blend in with the neighborhood, it is so much bigger and, you know, I'm, I'm gonna look out my kitchen window and see this humongous house out there when I'm used to seeing orchards and open land. But I'm addressing the water issue. Can I put this on the viewer?
Yes, you can. And if you're gonna talk from it, if you could just take the microphone with you?
Oh.
Turn it.
I've lived there fifty-two years and I've become quite familiar with the water situation and I don't know when it is they drilled and didn't detect subsurface water, but ninety percent of the time there isn't any. It's only during really heavy prolonged rains that it starts happening. And, uh, I've had to install six pumps in my house and two drains. Uh, water comes under the house and here I am up on a hill across the street. Yeah, I have a, an, about a half an acre back lot that soaks up millions of gallons of water and it flows next to my house and underneath the Hardwicks' house and ends up going right towards where this house is going to be built. The surface water is caught by the conduit that they put in. That was done, 'cause I brought that up during the subdivision, 'cause the water was running down the street and running straight onto the property. But the underground water is there. I mean, any of us who live there know, you dig down about one foot during the rainy season and the water just comes pouring in. And so here... Well, oh, I gotta explain, okay. This is just showing the difference in setback to the house, you know, the, the proposed construction's here on the top and then here's the house next door, which is set back, you know, a long ways on the lot. And it just, you know, it's such a huge difference. I mean, the homes are set back, they're not big and then right there is gonna be this large home right next to it. Now, I'll skip the tree. Here's one more on the water issues. That shows my backyard. It soaks up millions of gallons of water and it flows underground and the route that it leaves the neighborhood goes right through where the proposed house is going to be and then flows on north down to a gully eventually that comes out down at Lark and, and University. But all that water and the water comes to here from all the way up Oak Ridge Way, up Oak Ridge Way goes up in elevation towards Los Gatos. So it all comes down, all flows through there, all straight to where they're gonna build.
Okay.
And everybody in the neighborhood has had basement flooding problems, so, you know, it takes a lot of engineering to make it work.
Commissioners, any questions on Mr. Tripp? Okay, thank you. And our next speaker is Mary Keith Osborne. This is my last speaker card, so again, if anyone would like to speak on this agenda item, just submit one, please.
I'm Mary Keith Osborne. I live at one seven zero five one Wild Way, Los Gatos, in the nineteen zero, nineteen oh eight subdivision of Vessona Heights Albright Hill, also known as Mariposa Hill for there were many Mariposa lilies. Uh, the subdivision is unique for the developers of the area and there's quite a bit in that that's not in the part, it's, this house under, um, is, is just the very edge, the south edge of the, of the subdivision. Um, it's very unique, it's mixed oak habitat, semi-reparian. Um, we have no streetlights, um, though we have ways as opposed to the subdivision down, uh, Buena Vista subdivision which has avenues. Um, in the late nineteen twenties, two large houses were built, however, they were on large areas, the, the Lennox House, which is now Chen's house, and Alice Ainsley House on Wild Way. But they were, they were big houses and they had, they were, should have been, they were fine for big lots. Um, um, the objection is, um, over the drain field of a vernal pool and there actually was a vernal pool. It had, I remember, I've been there for seventy, almost seventy-two years, there was a pond at the Oka's next door to where this house is scheduled to be built and we had California, um, um, California, um, Slender Salamanders, we had toads and, and tree frogs and Calif, and, and California pond turtles and they came into my yard, so I know. And I live across the house next, there's a, the part of the Lennox House, the cottage, I live right across from that. And the, um, it was a, uh, the drainage from that vernal pool, which the neighbors put in a, um, oh shoot, uh, um, um, drain to do that, which is illegal. It's not legal to do that, but the, uh, the person who built the Oka House did something to the, to the, um, um, they did something to the, um, vernal pool and so it's, but it was there, it's there, it still fills up. And yes, there's tremendous problems and I'm, I guess, over my time.
Actually, you have thirty more seconds.
I had everything written down and, and, and I've, you know, other things, but it goes, the, the, the drainage goes right by my house and there's a lot of water, tremendous amounts of water when it rains heavily and it washes out my driveway, so I'm impacted.
Okay. Let's see if you have any questions. Any questions, commissioners? Okay, thank you. Okay, and I have no other speaker cards and, um, it appears no one is moving up, so I'm going to ask the applicant, Mr. Spalding, if you'd like to make some comments based on what you've heard.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, let me start with the, the, uh, the, uh, supposed intrusion in the easement. Uh, yes, I had the garage eve sticking eighteen inches over the edge and we are just gonna cut it off with a six inch eve. That's just the one car garage, it's a gable. It, it fits the architecture fine to have that, that single gable cut back to a six inch eve. So it doesn't affect the, the house in any way. Uh, the house is also fifteen foot, six inches from the property line so that we have a six inch space between the easement and the edge of the house, it's not directly on the easement. Um, the, the, the previous property owner, um, of this parcel is here and he just had, I just had him draw on the pool location. There's a, there's a grove of redwood trees, a big, the big oak tree and a greenhouse. I don't, unfortunately don't have a good picture of that, but you can s, I think this letter from, is in your packet.
Can you turn it?
Uh, yeah, I think this is in your packet. This is the picture of the house, of the, the site. There's, this is the giant oak tree that's on the rear parcel. There's a whole grove of redwoods there. The, there's a, there's a little greenhouse in the middle. The pool is over that ridge and down about twenty feet in vertical distance. When they were doing these story poles, when they were up at the second story level, you cannot see that pool from, so from this proposed second floor deck, you will not be able to see that pool. Oh, Trang, Trang has an aerial photo, which you can't see on this machine. So I, I don't, I can't imagine that i, is a privacy problem. And the, the owner here is, is willing to work with the new owners of... Oh, that's, that's the pool. Here's, here's where the building site is, right there. This, see this big gravel splotch there? That's, that's how they get in, using that drive. The new easement hugs the property line right there and comes like that. And my, my client is, is willing to work with the new owners of, of this parcel to get the access they need to service the back of their property. And I do have the verbiage here of that easement that says it's for maintenance and, and servicing their well. It's not like a day-to-day access easement. Uh, which I think Trang has a copy of the easement document. Okay?
Okay, Commissioner Johnson?
I have, I have three short questions for Mr. Spalding. They're not, okay. The first question is, the eve that you talked about that is now cut off to six inches, how high above the ground is it?
It starts at about nine and goes up to about fourteen.
Okay. So a vehicle can pass under the eve, correct? Whether it protrudes or not?
Uh, yeah, but they might have trucks coming through here, so we need to cut it off.
So you need to cut it off, okay. What type of trees are gonna be planted per the agreement that was reached?
Uh, I wasn't party to that. Evergreen carolinas, he says.
And actually, um, Mr. Spalding, what might be better if you could, if you don't mind just coming up directly to the microphone, identifying yourself and-
He's been reluctant to do that.
Um, while, while he's doing that, can I ask my third question?
Yes, please.
Um, your geotechnical engineer report on the subsurface water, it, when I read subsurface water, is that the same as vernal pool? So that your geotechnical engineer found no evidence of a vernal pool?
Vernal pool is a surface puddle, basically.
Okay.
And, and the, the subsurface water, there's a difference between the, the perched water that's in the, the loose surface soils and subsurface flow, which we're, we're talking more like six to eight feet down. So there, there's always this flow of water after a rain that's in the loose surface soils, but below that there's, there's a denser clay, sand that doesn't percolate very well. And that's, so that, the, the water that's getting into these crawl spaces is, is water that's only this deep. It's not down at the ba, our basement level.
Okay, thank you.
And if you could just identify yourself before you answer the question?
Yeah, my name's Robert Herzick and I'm the owner.
Okay. And then if you, um, I believe you had a quest, you had the answers to Commissioner Johnson's questions about what trees?
Just the type of tree.
Yeah, as I discussed with, you know, Terry and the neighbor, um, to the north side about putting in some carolinas and I also talked to Betsy Oka on the other side, whatever they wanted, you know, 'cause we wanted them to, you know, you know, also, 'cause it gave us privacy and them privacy.
Thank you.
And, you know, can I make one statement about the easement? The, like, I don't know if, 'cause I think Trang, I gave you a copy and Jennifer, it's, it's, it's basically not a daily easement. It was only, 'cause I have the owner of the property, the previous owner who sold it to us and we were in full agreement, it was recorded. It's for seasonal pruning and maintenance of the well.
It's, it's one sentence, why don't you read it?
Says, says a non-exclusive easement for the purpose of accessing and servicing of the well and the seasonal pruning and maintenance of the trees and hillside vegetation. It was never intended. And, and, you know, my attorney went over this with, you know, with the previous owners, we had it all, you know, documented, it's all in the, you know, in the correct re-easement, you know, grant deed. It was always understood to be a seasonal thing, maybe two, three times a year. I think the well, I don't know how many times a well has to be serviced. It's not a daily thing where they're coming in and out and that easement is also our setback. We were never gonna build in there. And I've, I've always tried to work with Mr. Chen. I met with him for over an hour one day, we talked on the phone, uh, and we discussed it and, um, and the first time I heard there was a problem was about two, three weeks ago.
Great. Um, well, thank you for that and as long as condition number thirteen is met and that Mr. Spalding will remove that, I think we're, we're comfortable on this and with regard to that specific portion. Commissioner Smith?
Um, Mr. Herzick, I'm happy to ask you this question, or Mr. Spalding, but while we're on the subject of landscaping and we're on the subject of Mr. Chen's property, I know what you're gonna put on either side of the house, but, but you haven't called out the landscaping for the back of, of this property. So we know what's screened from Mr. Chen's side, well, how are you gonna screen from your side or aren't you? Is there landscaping in the back of your house?
Yes, we're gonna be, uh, have some landscaping there. When we had to lift out for the story poles, I wanted to see, like, if we had a view. I was up over thirty feet and I'm six two. I could not even see the pool or anything. It, it was a, it was like a non-issue. They've al, already planted some Italian cypresses. We're willing to plant, um, you know, um, a site screen on our side too.
I, I think maybe that, that would go a long way to solving that, that one issue of who's looking, but I also know the slope of your yard. I wondered myself about seeing, right, right.
And the other thing too, you know, Mr. Chen wanted to, um, you build, possibly build a tennis court and do some other construction. I offered him complete access, even though it wasn't for construction or anything associated with that. It was seasonal maintenance of the well and, and the vegetation and I offered, 'cause it was predicated, he asked me personally if it was predicated, his tennis court and construction was predicated on using the access. I said, yeah, during construction, if you get approved by the town of Los Gatos. We were all in agreement. He and I were all in agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Herzick.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Oh, actually, Commissioner Bushwa and then Commissioner Talispar? Is it of Mr.?
It's for Mr. Spalding, yeah, so. I, uh, just trying to anticipate what I think the commission is gonna be deliberating about. I, I think neighborhood compatibility is gonna be an issue that we're gonna have to address. And, and I know you made your case for kind of expanding what we think of, but, you know, we do have the guidelines that say two houses to the left, two houses to the right, five houses across the street. We're supposed to give more, higher priority when considering neighborhood compatibility to those homes. So I just wanted to give you one more opportunity to, to make your case as to how and why you think this is compatible with, with how we define the immediate neighborhood.
Well, when, when, when you guys were drawing up those rules, I, I was one that complained about that because anytime you have two houses from the fifties, uh, as your immediate neighbors, then you're compet, what you're judging your compatibility to is something that's, that is, I mean, if you have the misfortune of buying a property that's got two small houses adjacent, then you're like, you're precluded from building a house that would meet all the other zoning rules. So, you know, as an architect, I don't look at just the two houses on either side, especially if they're old and, and will eventually come before you to be remodeled. I look at more the, the whole streetscape more like what I showed you in that picture. So unfortunately, I agree, that doesn't immediately match what you guys passed as your neighborhood guidelines, but I don't think those were terribly wise.
Commissioner Talispar, did you have a question?
I do. So as an architect, isn't it somewhat of the design solution to, um, fit into the neighborhood? I mean, isn't that something that you take a look at when you're designing a house for somebody?
Yes.
Don't you walk out there and get the, the feeling of the ambiance of the, of the environment? I mean, isn't that what you hopefully take some of your cues from? Or how do you?
Yes, but I know where you're going. Uh, you, you look at the house-
Oh, where you're going at all. Just want you to answer my question, if you don't mind.
Well, you have the houses to the right, which, which are set way back because they have the land to do so and because, and they set the houses there because they got the view, whereas this parcel is not like those parcels. So I, I can't, I can't design a house like that on that parcel because the parcels are completely different.
In our staff report, um, on page six, the staff says, um, several times, the project type, and I would like to know how you would respond to this for me, please. The project type is consistent with that of the immediate neighborhood, however, the intensity of the project is greater in terms of square footage and far than that of the immediate neighborhood. And then one more comment, that although the size of the proposed project is not compatible with the immediate neighborhood, the architecture is compatible in character with that of the immediate neighborhood. So can you maybe- So can you maybe enlighten me about how you interpret that?
Well, the, the main, the, the houses around it are what we call eclectic. They're, the only things that are consistent, there's two houses that are ranches from the 60s or late 50s. Everything else is different. The architecture's different, the, the massing's different, that's eclectic. So, uh, now the newer houses, if you go three, three houses to the right, there's a, there's a newer house that's very similar to this. It's a similar lot, similar two-story house, um, that was recently approved. And immediately to the left is a large two sto-, I mean, it's, it's not a, a large in square footage, but it's tall. It's two, two stories, steep roof.
Okay. So, um, you mentioned massing, and I was going to ask you, how are you using the cellar in lieu of square footage to address the massing?
The, the cell, it doesn't address the, the, uh, they used up the whole, um, FAR above ground if you include the accessory building. So the cellar was additional square footage. But from, from the street, the cellar is entirely underground.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Spalding. I will close the public in proportion of this, and I will look to my commissioners for any questions right now of staff. And if there are no questions, any comments that you'd like to share as we begin deliberations towards the motion. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I, I think the only problem I have is with compatibility of the neighborhood. Now, I would not hold the applicant to saying he has to be compatible in the sense of square footage. We know newer houses tend to be bigger than older houses, and that doesn't bother me. And it is, we, as has been pointed out, we do that. So we try to interpret these things reasonably. However, I'm looking at A3 of the plans, and that is a large, massive-looking house. Not so much because of the square footage, but because of the architecture. And I believe that one ought to be able to design a house without making it look like a massive house, unless indeed, maybe it's just a massive house. But I don't think the square footage is massive. But I do think the house is massive. So I'm going to have a very serious problem, and I'm listening to my fellow commissioners, maybe I'm missing it here, but I don't care whether you define it to, next to it, whatever, however you define it. When you drive down that street and you look at the houses, you see a totally different neighborhood than this house looks like. And I guess that's the problem I have. It's not a problem that can't be remedied, because it can be remedied. So it isn't, we're not saying you can't build a house there. We're not even, I'm not saying you can't build a big house there. But I think this particular design, it looks massive unnecessarily so. So I just throw that out for my fellow commissioners.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Talisfor?
Well, I, I, that is what I noticed, uh, immediately with the plans on A3, but just driving in that area, I mean, it is a very countrified-type area. This house stands out. It is the architecture. And architecture can solve a lot of problems and a lot of issues. It's not the square footage so much, but it is the architecture. And that's what I find mostly incompatible. I know we talk about this, or some people think this is a neighborhood in transition. Well, I would hope that we would not think that in transition means you change the total character. I think here in Los Gatos, we relish the unique neighborhoods we have. That is an extremely unique neighborhood. One of the reasons we ask, or that is stated in our general plan and our design guidelines to pay attention to the, the environment that you're planning on building a new home in, is because we want to preserve what is best about Los Gatos. That's one of the better jewel hidden neighborhoods. It's very wooded. It's, it's a lovely area. I would hate to see that destroyed. So that's how I feel.
Any other comments? Actually, a quick question of staff, Ms. Savage. When this lot, when this area was subdivided into the three lots, was, were there any environmental studies done as part of the subdivision?
I worked on the subdivision, I answered that. No, um, it was categorically exempt.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other comments? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Uh, this is a question of staff, too, and I'm not sure which of the staff. Should we decide that it needs to be redesigned as opposed to just turning it down or disapproving it? I assume we can, we can do that. That's a question.
Yes. Yes.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Smith, and then Commissioner Talisfor?
Uh, that was going to be one of my questions, so I'll make my comments now. I do not want to turn down this project, but I do want to, um, see the applicant come back, um, with more detail, and perhaps since, uh, we know Mr. Spalding is a very talented architect, he often can solve some of the issues that are raised at these hearings. And, um, I, I'd like to see it come back and be slightly modified. I also want to mention, though, that the neighbors that are here have not raised, um, large issues about, or their, their heightened concern has been over water issues, this is what I've heard, more than the architecture. And so the planning commission, commissioners are raising the architectural questions, uh, which I think we should. But I also want to say that perhaps they, the neighbors themselves are more accepting of, um, the houses looking different in, in the neighborhood, and it is a unique neighborhood. And we are faced with a smaller lot. So many things that Mr. Spalding said tonight, I think, make it, um, make it unique for us to look at.
Commissioner Talisfor, and then Commissioner Erickson?
My, was a follow-up question of staff. Um, because landscaping in this area would be very important, especially with the privacy issue, can we also, if it does come back, that's where we go with this, have a landscape plan included?
Staff would recommend that if you do have the project come back, that they show the privacy screening, uh, the planned trees for that, not necessarily the entire landscaping for the lot.
Okay, then a question for you, then. Is the front landscaping that's there now, will that remain?
No, uh, as indicated on the plans, some of those trees are, uh, were approved to be removed and will be removed.
Okay, I might like to suggest we see if there's, what will be planted, uh, along the front of that street, because that's, uh, pretty much one of the characteristics of the neighbor next door, at least.
Commissioner Erickson?
This is actually a question that either for the staff and, um, or for other commissioners who might have greater expertise in the area that I'm going to ask the question about that I have. It's not completely clear to me how the construction on this site would exacerbate the water issues that the neighbors have in the neighborhood. So if someone could help me understand how the construction on this site would make the wa-, assuming that they have water problems now, they've expressed that, how would the construction of this particular property, on this particular property exacerbate their concerns about water?
Which of staff would like to answer that?
I will defer that answer to our Parks and Public Works staff.
Okay.
Construction of this project should not, you know, impact the neighborhood, because they have mitigated with the onsite drainage already. I'm not sure if that's the question.
So there would be, so then your judgment is that there would be no impact on their current water issues by construction on this site as presently proposed?
That's right.
And one other question of engineering. Have you gotten a chance to look at this, uh, let, desk item from Butano that the applicant submitted?
Yes, I did.
And do you have any comments or concerns regarding the letter?
That's very, um, it's just come, came to the same conclusion that, um, staff had this afternoon.
Okay.
Yeah, in terms of groundwater.
Okay. And one other question, um, with regard to the vernal pools, I, it says in the desk item that PPW did go out and take a look at it, and other than site, um, a site look, they did soil as well as vegetation in determining whether or not it was a vernal pool?
We are not an expert. We cannot make the determination of vernal pool or not, but this is based on the definition of vernal pool and the condition, the site out there and with the slopes and the vegetations. Um, we believe that it does not look like it is a vernal pool, but like I say, we are not the, the expert on it. And so, you know, it's, it, it's not, the condition does not, typically does not, um, give indication that vernal pool is there.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Bushwa?
Could I, could I follow up on that? What, what time of year did you guys do the site visit for that?
I went out there this, this morning.
This morning?
Which just rained, it's recently.
Okay.
Um, Ms. Bailey, did you have a comment?
Well, I do know this has historically been an issue, so it wasn't just this, this period of time. This is for several years, this issue has come up, so PPW has gone out, I think this issue came up maybe in the 90s. So, I mean, it has been an ongoing question. So I can't specifically say when Parks and Public's work was at the site, but it wasn't just this time period.
Okay, but you can, it would be safe to assume that they've gone out multiple times, uh, multiple times of year and never found any evidence of a vernal pool?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments, commissioners? Okay, Commissioner Bushwa?
While we're on the topic of vernal pools, I'm, I'm trying to bite my tongue here. Uh, I know a little too much, maybe, but that's a serious claim that there's a vernal pool on site. It's, under the jurisdiction of the US Army Corps of Engineers, filling it is illegal without a permit, but they're extremely difficult to determine presence, especially in such an altered system. I, I would be surprised if there's one functioning on the site now, historically maybe. So I, I'm at a loss of what to do about that issue, because it is a serious claim, they do support endangered species, you start bringing in Fish and Wildlife Service, I mean, it, it's a mess if there's one, but I, I can't imagine with the alterations that have occurred to the hydrology in the site, that there is one currently on the site. And that's, that's just my two cents.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I've not had the same experience that Commissioner Bushwa has had, but I've had some litigation experience with it. Uh, I would say this, the only evidence we've got on the record is there perhaps were vernal pools there some years ago. The evidence I heard this evening as to what presently exists does not support the argument that there are presently vernal pools. And we must decide based upon the evidence we have before us. We've got the staff telling us, over a period of years, they've gone out there. Uh, we have staff telling us as recently as today, and we all know we finally got some rain, uh, and that's what vernal pools often do. They lie dormant, and suddenly you've got a vernal pool. You've got all kinds of interesting things with vernal pools. But we have no evidence to support that. And I would certainly agree with Commissioner Bushwa, that were there evidence, we would have a much more serious problem, but there isn't, I don't see it there.
Any other comments? Can, um, would anyone like to take a dra-, a crack at a motion? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I will make a motion that we continue this matter, uh, we'll deal with a date certain in a moment, um, to give the applicant an opportunity to reduce the appearance of the bulk and mass in the design. I think if anyone simply walks that neighborhood, and this is incompatible with the neighborhood, and it's not our job to be architects, but I can tell you that A3 shows, um, a very, my judgment, massive building. So Mr. Spalding is a good architect, he's appeared before us a number of times. And I would, I'd like to allow them a reasonable opportunity, if they so wish, to take another cut at it, to make it look less massive. So that merely gets now to me asking staff for a suggested date certain for the continuance.
The earliest date would be March 14th, but it would depend if that schedule would work with the applicant. I mean, I don't know if he would want further out than that.
Well, what we could, I, I don't know how we should do this, but, um, without opening the, well, you, I could ask you to open the, the, the public hearing solely for the matter of asking the applicant.
A very specific question.
As a convenience of that date.
Okay. Before we move to that, I'd like to see, um, would I get a second on this motion? Okay. So Commissioner Talisfor would second. Mr. Spalding, I'm going to open the, um, public hearing for the very specific question of if you, for a redesign, as you heard, how much time would you need? And would March 14 be an adequate timeframe? Okay, um, so just the record show that Mr. Spalding's asking for, um, the next time, and Ms. Bailey?
March 28.
March 28?
Suggestions to us as to your convenience, rather than we'll just...
I'm, 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 I'm leaving for two weeks to, to Tokyo, um, and I think I leave the 14th and come back the 29th. Yeah, a, a date uncertain, uh, same, I, I, I have to check my flight.
Unfortunately, Mr. Spalding, when we continue, we like to put it to a specific date, so the noticing requirement is...
Would April be more convenient?
Mr. Spalding, think about that, and Ms. Bailey, you had a comment?
Well, there's two options. Um, we could continue it to a date uncertain if you're willing to pay for re-advertising, or we could continue it to a date certain, and if you need more time, we could continue it.
We couldn't make it on February 22nd?
We wouldn't have enough ti-, if you could give us plans by, you know, the end of the week.
By tomorrow?
I know you work lenders, but...
Well, actually, it's not, you have two days.
Why don't we say the 14th and, uh, hopefully...
March 14.
March 14?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and I believe Commissioner Talisfor, you were the second, or March 14th?
It's fine.
Okay. And commissioners, any comments? Commissioner Bushwa?
There'd been some talk and a lot of question about the landscaping. I'm wondering if we could request a landscaping plan as part of that redesign?
Okay, the maker of the motion?
Appropriate.
Uh, well, I know Commissioner Talisfor would like the same thing. I, I, my only sensitivity, I guess, is how complete a plan we want. I've, I, so, Commissioner Bushwa, when you say, uh, the plan, what, what do you have in mind?
I, a conceptual landscaping plan would be fine, just to give some indication of location and size and maybe species, but...
But I do believe one of the issues that was raised was screening between this and 1-0, 17020 Wild Way, so the actual screening as well as some conceptual...
Is that the, I'm sorry, is that the Chen property or the...
Yes, the one right behind it.
Okay, because I've, again, I've heard no, well, it doesn't make any difference what I've heard. Uh, the applicant can submit, uh, I would amend the motion to allow, to ask the applicant to submit a conceptual, um, arch-, uh, landscape plan, but I would not, in that amendment, require that to include the back of the property. In other words, if the applicant thinks that's what they ought to do, that's, that's fine. So we're asking for a conceptual plan, but we're not telling them how to do it or where to do it, just, we would like the conceptual plan.
I would agree with that, and I think also that it would include size of specimens. Yes, okay.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Erickson?
Just a comment. I think Mr. Spalding and the owners have been here tonight. They've heard, they've expressed concerns. I would trust that they would respond in a way that they would judge correctly and would go to whatever detail they thought would be required, based on the feedback that they've heard tonight. So I would not think it would be appropriate to provide a lot of specificity in the motion.
Any other comments?
As the maker of the motion, I agree with that comment.
And Commissioner Talisfor, do you?
I have no other, uh, comment, except that I agree with that as well.
Okay. Um, so I'll call the question. Again, it's a continuance to March 22, I mean, I'm sorry, March 14. March 14, thank you. Um, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It passes unanimously. Okay? Thank you. We are now at item number three on our agenda. We are now at item number three on our agenda, which is conditional use permit application, U-11-018, which is located at 15043 Los Gatos Boulevard. Ms. Savage, this also is your report. Thank you.
There is a desk item for this application as well. It provides additional historical information, which I will discuss during my presentation, of the alcoholic beverage policy, non-conforming uses, and a correction to the required findings. In 1997, town code was amended to require a conditional use permit, or CUP, for numerous types of uses, including restaurants and bars. When the subject property was annexed to the town in 1991, the bar, currently known as the Boulevard Tavern, was deemed non-conforming since it did not have a Los Gatos CUP. Town code allowed the property owner 20 years to obtain a CUP. The applicant is requesting approval to allow the bar to continue to operate. The bar has 50 seats, a pool table, and televisions. The Boulevard Tavern operates from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. seven days a week. They have karaoke on Thursdays from 9:00 p.m. till 1:00 a.m., and occasionally they have live bands on Fridays and Saturdays from 9:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. The site is located in an area of town known as the North Forty. The North Forty is currently going through a specific plan process to determine the vision for its future development. It is not known at this time whether the use would be compatible with the North Forty specific plan. The applicant is willing to accept a condition for periodic review to allow the town to determine whether the use remains appropriate for and compatible with the North Forty specific plan. A condition requiring periodic review is included. The alcoholic beverage policy does not apply to the subject application since the application is not for a new establishment or to change existing service. This is consistent with past town policy when reviewing non-conforming bar uses that were required to obtain a CUP to legalize their use. The alcoholic beverage policy was first adopted in 1990. Several of the establishments in town obtained a CUP to remove their non-conforming status after the policy was adopted. They were not required to comply with the hours of operation of this policy. The desk item includes an excerpt from a 1994 Town Council Report regarding an amendment to the alcoholic beverage policy. This report states, and it's noted, bolded in text, that existing establishments are not required to modify their hours of operation as a result of the policy amendment. The policy could apply to the use if it is determined that the use is a public nuisance, and this is noted in town code. In the recommendation section of the report, staff erroneously included findings required by the town's alcoholic beverage policy. Since the policy does not apply, the deciding body does not need to make the required findings for a service beyond 10:00 p.m. The findings on page two of the report and in exhibit two are correct. Staff recommends approval of the project because it would allow an existing use to change its non-conforming status to legally operate. This concludes staff presentation, and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Savage. Commissioners, any question? Commissioner Bouchard, and then Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Ms. Savage. I have a question about the periodic review for the compatibility of uses. Given the track record on the North Forty specific plan process, periodic review every two years or within one year of adoption of the specific plan. So, what if it takes five years before we get the specific plan adopted? That means you're going to have two review periods before then, without any additional guidance by the specific, I'm just like, what are you going to be reviewing it for before the specific plan is adopted? That's what's confusing to me. Does that make sense?
It does. And we would be reviewing it before the specific plan is adopted to weigh against it, against any plan that is or is not adopted. So, if for the first two years or the first four years, there is no plan, staff would make that analysis and send their findings to the planning commission to note that there is no plan to verify its compatibility with. The condition was meant to, a sort of a forward-thinking condition, should the specific plan be adopted, that staff and the town would have the ability to determine that the use isn't compatible with any future development and cease its use. However, if that plan is not adopted and there's no future development planned, we would certainly allow the use to continue, since there would be no plan to be compatible with.
Okay, all right. The review is strictly on compatibility of use. That's correct, right?
Correct.
Okay. I just throw it out there that until it's adopted, I don't see any point in reviewing it, but I'll leave that for discussion, so.
Ms. Prop, do you have a...
I think staff wanted to allow the owners a little bit more forward-thinking, that it's not just a review after it's adopted and they're told that it's not compatible, and there needs to be some sort of immediate change in their use or ability to continue to use or modification, that the concept of a review period, it might just come back to you as a consent item, that there's no change or something. But in the event that in the next two-year period or something, there has been something, or there is certainly direction by the town, even if it hasn't been adopted, the thought is to allow the owners more than adequate time and methodology to move through and be part of the discussion, as opposed to just after the fact.
Okay, Commissioner O'Donnell, then Commissioner Erickson?
It says requesting approval to legalize a non-conforming bar. I don't know whether that means to issue a conditional use permit, because I never heard of legalizing something without giving a permit. So, if I assume for the moment it means giving a conditional use permit, now, I'm going to, let me ramble a little bit. So, the first question is, what is it? Because normally, if you get a conditional use permit, you can vest certain rights, and sometimes it's hard to take them back. So, I'll direct that part of this question, I think, to the town attorney. Secondly, I hope we aren't hung up in the definition of North Forty, because while I have no objections to this use at the moment, it could prevent other uses that are not quote-unquote "the North Forty," but rather are in the North Forty. So, if the North Forty takes a long time, which has been what it's been doing, such that some of that property was developed, but not in toto, and no specific plan was adopted for the whole thing, things happen, I would not want the issues to prevent such a use. So, if we're only saying if the North Forty specific plan is adopted, then that's too narrow. If we're saying that the town is considering changes of zoning, that kind of thing, for the area around this particular use, and I don't know how to define around, that then too, we could give them a reasonable time to phase out. Certainly, when I read what the applicant has said, they've been very good about that, and that's kind of what they said. But I want to be very careful that in four or five years from now, or whenever, we have a change of circumstance and people are trying to understand what all this means. So, two questions. One, what is this legalized thing? Two, can we define it such that it isn't just the adoption of the specific plan or just the adoption of general zoning for the North Forty, which is a, in our lexicon, is sort of a defined use? So, if the town attorney could respond to the first one...
It is to approve a conditional use permit and permit the use.
And before you do that, so you'll address your comments on how you give a conditional use permit and vest rights under it, subject to taking it away under less, don't we need very clear circumstances before we can yank it?
So, generally, Commissioner O'Donnell, when you grant a conditional use permit, that is considered, as you indicated, a vested right. In this case, staff has had lengthy discussions with the property owner and the applicant about the change in circumstance, potential change in circumstance, given the potential rezoning for whether it's a specific plan or, as you pointed out, an evolving area in town that the town councils and town planning commission have been looking at for a number of years. This is, there are provisions, certainly with the applicant's consent, by which other CUPs even in the past year have had interesting conditions with limitations that are not necessarily vested forever. And so, in this case, staff is recommending this as a use permit, but with the conditions that it have this review, that it not necessarily continue if there's a rezoning in that area. We understand that, that that is not a typical condition, but certainly under the circumstances, a condition that staff felt comfortable recommending this for a, to become a conforming use. The alternative, and staff explored that, and there were certainly discussions early on, is that the other end of the spectrum is to not recommend the continued use. And there were certainly discussions with the owner of the current business that, given the fact that there's no certainty about when any rezoning would occur in the area, that that seemed unrealistic or harsh to ask them to discontinue the use because the 20 years had expired when there's no certainty of when that area would be rezoned.
All I'm worried about is, I've seen these used for mobile home parks and that kind of thing, and there you get into a reasonable period of time to take that right away because you're amortizing the amount of money somebody spent. In this particular case, there is no new improvement. So, whatever is there has, as far as I can see, been fully amortized. So, there's, when I say vesting, it is a technical term here. I would like the ability to give notice that the use permit will expire on as broad a basis as is possible. We seem to be saying it's a one-year thing with us. We give them essentially one-year notice. And it isn't clear to me, if that's the case, why we have to pin it too closely to the North Forty as opposed to a change in circumstance such as that, with a one-year notice of cessation and withdrawal. The broader it is for us, the more consistent it will be for them, and there will be no argument that we're taking away this valuable right, because what we're trying to suggest is, we could say no right now, but we're trying to be reasonable and say, you ought to be able to do it, and as far as we're concerned, unless there's a conflict, that's probably okay, but we don't want to get hung up on this. So, one-year notice, and it's over. And we could give examples, but much, I'm just trying to get as broad as possible for the benefit of the town.
So, if that is the commission's desire after the public testimony and your deliberation, then staff can recommend some language to you that would address those concerns.
Commissioner Erickson?
So, pursuing that point just a little bit more. So, I read the sentence, the first sentence in the two-year review, that if, in fact, and I wasn't exactly clear what staff was trying to accomplish, it says to, in part, to, whichever occurs first, to determine where the use is appropriate for the area and compatible for the North Forty specific plan. So, that's, if that, if that sentence had read, the use is appropriate for the area or compatible with the North specific plan, if that's what, so was the staff trying to say there are two conditions before the use permit, that it had to be that one, or two bases, that it wasn't appropriate, an appropriate use for the area, which could be defined as larger than the North Forty, and it had to be incompatible with a specific North Forty, or were they two separate issues, that on the basis of either, that one could consider ending the conditional use permit?
And I proposing... I propose... I pressed it. But it basically just says it's tied to one-year's notice. So, we don't have to argue about, was that the kind of change everybody had in mind? You can say what you just did, or, and you can say, or, giving a one-year notice for the cessation of the use by the town, period, which kind of obviates the first two, I think, but at least it gets rid of any potential argument in the future, I hope, in the future.
Okay, before we get into language, are there any more questions? I'd like to open up the hearing at some point. Commissioner Bouchard?
No, I was gonna, it was discussion, so...
Because this is great discussion for deliberations, but there may be something we hear that may affect what we discuss. Okay, so, let's open the public hearing. The first speaker will be the applicant, and I believe that's Georgiana Spinazzi. Thank you. And when you get to the podium, if you could just state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Georgiana Spinazzi, and my husband and I are the owners of this particular...
If you could fix the microphone.
...piece of property, thank you. I'm not very adept at this kind of thing. I'm really here just mainly to introduce myself and to tell you what our intent is. My husband and I, for some reason, have entered our retirement years way too quickly from our perspective. We find we're a very, very tiny little tadpole in a very large pond. And so, we, our intent is to do, go along with whatever occurs with the North Forty. It's not a good time for us to sell. That's probably obvious to all of you. So, we have no intent to sell until we know what is going to be sold for. We have no intent to develop, and we are most comfortable with the town's recommendation. We think it was extremely fair and reasonable. As soon as we know, we really would just like to have the status quo. Keep it like it is until we know, all of us know what we're doing. Otherwise, it's going to be a big responsibility for us because it's, you know, going to become just an empty space, and that, we see that as a great hazard. My final thing is about Mike. He took over the bar, which was not much of a bar, 13 years ago, and he's been our tenant for 13 years. We've never once had a problem. We've never once had an issue. He's developed relationship with the police department and the town, so he's in, you're in good hands with him. And really, you're in good hands with us. And so, I'm starting to get really nervous, so I'm going to say goodbye now.
Well, before you say goodbye, if you could stay there and answer any questions. Commissioner Bouchard?
Thank you for being here and for your comments. I have a very simple question. The property was annexed to the town in 91, and the bar was already there. I'm wondering, when was the bar established? When did it start?
I don't know. It prolonged.
1930s is what I'm hearing from the audience. Does that sound right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner, is that a hand? Commissioner Erickson?
A couple of quick questions. In the staff report, condition number nine for approval, if you're familiar with it, says that delivery shall be limited the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Is there some reason why the deliveries need to go that late in the day?
You would need to talk to Mike. He runs all the business end of it.
And actually, Mike, do you mind coming up to answer the question? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Ellenberg. I'm the owner of the Boulevard Tavern. In terms of the deliveries from vendors, no deliveries happen before 10:00 a.m. They won't deliver before that. So, any deliveries we have, you can write that any way you want. There's never been a delivery before 10 o'clock, because we open at 10 o'clock.
My question was about the 7:00 p.m. that being beyond, say, beyond 5:00 o'clock or something, as opposed, it says 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
That, with any of the deliveries, we, any way you want to write that up, they'll deliver at any time. And usually, it's between 10:00 a.m. and probably 2:00 p.m. That's not an issue at all. You can write that anyway.
Are you suggesting that as the hours? I'm not, I was just raising a question about...
Not hours of operation. You're talking about deliveries, in terms of noise for neighbors and things like that, and traffic issues.
Right.
I would say 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. is very reasonable.
Okay, a second question. Condition number 10 says that trash and recycling disposal is from the business shall only be emptied between 9:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. Is that, again, the concern...
Is that, again, the concern isn't about 9:00 o'clock in the morning, it's about 9:00 p.m. at night?
The only time we had, West Valley Collection does our trash pickup, and that's every Friday morning, and never in the evening. And I believe that's usually around 7:00 or 8:00 a.m. in the morning. And we're a commercial account, so that can also be just a phone call away to tell them to pick up at a certain time, and they'll do that, I'm pretty sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, well, thank you both. Okay, and I have two speaker cards. The first is with Amy Desbars.
Hello, commissioners and staff. My name is Brett Moore. I live at 16301 Los Gatos Almond Road in Los Gatos, a lifetime Los Gatos resident. In fact, I was born just a couple hundred yards away from the Boulevard at Good Sam, so I've been around here a while. Also, we have, not only lived in Los Gatos a long time, my family business is on Los Gatos Boulevard, Moore Buick GMC, so I definitely have a vested interest in seeing businesses continue on the Boulevard. But I'm here for both the business and, and personal reasons. As was mentioned, the bar's been, A bar has been in that location for years and years and years. And, you know, I can remember back when there were some establishments there by other names, and it was a completely different clientele than you see now. So I think whatever Mike has done, he has really brought that bar to a level that it's really a destination for all of us that live on, I guess, East Los Gatos. There's really nowhere else to go. He's done a great job with that establishment, making it a place that's fun to go to, and fun for us to have a escape away from our daily lives, you know, and get a babysitter for the kids. It's really the only thing on that side of town, so we would really hate to see it go away any sooner than it had to. I think Mike also mentioned in the letter that I think probably everybody read, I don't know if he did in the letter, but somebody mentioned it, but he's also held several fundraisers for families in need there that have really come to the aid of, you know, some great families in our Los Gatos area. So I think we need to really appreciate all he's done for the families. On the business side, I guess personally in business, I feel like there's, like I've mentioned, there's really nowhere to come on this side of town, whether it be a bar, even the restaurant choices are diminishing. All the empty car lots are probably a too-close-to-home reminder that, you know, the Los Gatos Boulevard is becoming less and less of a destination for consumers to go to. So I think every time we have an opportunity to keep a good business like this one there, we need to do whatever we can to see that it continue. There was some talk about the years of, years of the conditional use permit. You know, I would like to see it be longer. I mean, I kind of agreed with Commissioner Bouchard that, I'm not sure why we'd have to revisit it every two years, but maybe I don't understand that as well. But I think, in my last 30 seconds, obviously, I would just strongly recommend that we can continue this, or grant the conditional use permit and have the Boulevard continue there as long as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any questions? Okay, Ms. Desbars.
Hi, my name's Amy Desbars, 267 Longridge Road. I live in Live Oak Manor, and someone just referred to us, us as Uptown Los Gatos, and I kind of liked that. So I'm here once again to represent Uptown Los Gatos. I want to thank the planning commission for all of your hard work on the McHugh site and really trying to fight for us and keeping it a retail restaurant. Unfortunately, the town council didn't support us in that, but we appreciate that. And just like Brett said, we're looking for retail restaurants, entertainment on our side of town, and the Boulevard is one of those places. If you walk in, especially when he's holding a fundraiser for a family, it is Los Gatos High Alumni. It is a huge reunion. It is a great place to go with your friends. You can play pool, they can dance, you can play pinball even, there's TVs to watch games. And just to reiterate what Brett said, he has changed it around. It's not autos, it's not the biker bar anymore. And it just gives all of us something to do on our end of town, and this is just what we're looking for. And I just hope that you will support him, and I'm not sure why it has to be a timeline, why we have to check every year. And if the Spinazis decide to keep that piece of property and keep that bar there, 1930s, isn't there some, like, historical thing, if something's built before? What's, what are the rules here? But I'm just encouraging you to really support this, because we're kind of feeling like we're getting the shaft right now on Uptown Los Gatos. So we'd really appreciate your support. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Desbars. Any questions? Okay, oh, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Just your last comment, I'm curious why you feel that way. What have we been doing lately?
Oh, not, not you. I said, thank you for supporting us. Hmm, 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 why?
It's always good to know.
Just the amount of retail and restaurant that has gotten denied, the lots that are sitting there, it's taken a long time for McHugh to get built. I mean, we're going into year three. Is it really going to happen? What did they say to us, May? Are we really going to see building in May? Letting it go to pot? I mean, it was a dump site, graffiti, garbage for two years. We just really, 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 really want to reinforce that we want businesses, we want residential, we want, I mean, not residential, we do not want residential. We want businesses, and we want entertainment, and we want retail and restaurants. We want restaurants.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Walking, walking, walking.
Commissioner Teller.
Ms. Desbars, Baja Fresh, I understand, just opened up at the Trader Joe's New Town Center. So there you go, there's one restaurant you can check.
So I'm going to have a little rebuttal. We have Unamoss, we have High Tech, Baja Fresh, and I understand Chipotle is getting, coming into town. Can we have something? I know you don't get to pick besides burritos, but, but I would like to put a little pitch into that. It would just be nice to see a place like Double D's, I hope you're watching, Double D's on our side of town, a place where families can go and your kids can play pool and play video games. And unfortunately, McHugh could have been that place. They had enough square footage to create a Sonoma Chicken Coop, or an Aki, or something of the sort. Unfortunately, they didn't reach out to all their resources, because they're out there, because they want to come to Los Gatos.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. And I have no speaker cards, so I'll go ahead and close the public testimony portion. And commissioners, now is the time to deliberate on exactly how or what kind of language you want with regards to the CUP. Commissioner Erickson? Oh, I am so sorry, I forgot to let the applicant speak. Do you have any rebuttals to what you heard, all the positive? Yes, please, Mr. Ellenberg, please come back. I apologize. Oh, and I need to reopen it, so that Mr. Ellenberg can speak.
I just want to thank the, the planning department and the town for even considering this. This place is like, true to heart for me. I want to, I don't know if I can put something on this. I was just ripping up the carpet five, six years ago, and we were talking about how long this place has been in, in town. I don't know if this will show up. Do I have it upside down? We know it goes back, we think, to the 30s or 40s. That's a long time, but this is one I just happened to find at 1955. It used to be San Jose Los Gatos Road. God, I wasn't even, I don't even know how old my parents were then, but as you know from my landlords, they're willing to work with the town and respect, obviously, that area of the North Forty, what it's going to become in time. And we're just trying to keep it how it is for now until that time does come and, and hopefully be part of that. When I took over as owner, it was a different bar. And I don't want to put labels on the kind of clientele it was, but it was not the bar it is today. And that has a lot to do with the Los Gatos Police Department. They, they worked with me from the get-go. I've owned it 11 years, and it, it was tough when I took it over. And I worked with them, and it's a completely different clientele. We're not perfect, no bar in town is perfect. No business in town is perfect, but I've done pretty much everything I can do that they've asked of me, and they've, that's the sole reason that it turned around. And there's a really good community on that side of town, and, you know, not everybody drinks and comes in that bar. There's people that come in and watch football, and they drink Coca-Cola and water, and a lot of people do drink, too. And they have a right to do that within reason, but there's just a, the clientele in that area, and the homes, and the businesses that are surrounding me, the medical buildings, there's people that have been coming in there from Good Samaritan Hospital when they have a baby for years. That's what they do. They celebrate, and they come over, and they go outside, and they smoke a cigar to celebrate, and they have a cocktail, and they go back to the hospital. And for the wives out there, I'm sorry to tell you, but the husbands have been doing this for years, and that's their celebration. And months later, when the wife's feeling better, she comes out with her girlfriends, and they have some wine or whatever. Anyway, it's just an important part of that side of town. Los Gatos is so important within the integrity of protecting the values of a historical town that's so beautiful to so many people, but at the same time, growing for the future. And I guess that's kind of the, the two things that are at, you know, at conflict here. And this is your perfect chance to kind of protect the history of this town with allowing growth around to happen at the same time. So I just want to thank you all again for, for hearing us and for all the supporters and what you said. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Ellenberg. And any comments? Oh, you do have one. Commissioner Smith?
I just want to make a comment to you that I hope that you and the neighbors will stay very involved in this North Forty process, because a one-year notice that your business may not be there or be compatible is not a lot of notice when you have invested the heart, soul, financial, emotional investment that you've made. And so I just, I want to go on the record of saying that to you, because I, I know you've engendered a lot of respect in the community so far because of turning that business around. You must stay vigilant on the North Forty, and you and the neighbors. So that's my comment to you.
Any other comments?
And I just want to make one other comment to that effect, is that there's nothing to say that the North Forty means you're going to end your business. Nothing has been decided with regards to the specific plan nor its uses, and I think it's feedback that we've gotten today to hear, well, what's important to the residential area in that community? This is the type of feedback that more of us need to hear as we start to envision what is most appropriate for that area. So thank you. Okay, so now I will close the public testimony, and commissioners, look to you for discussion and eventually a motion. Commissioner O'Donnell and Commissioner Erickson?
This is not a motion. Let me say this, that I think we're all very impressed with the owners, and I can say owners in the sense of both sets, the people that own the ground and the building, and the people that run the building. But I think, as it was also pointed out, there were some years before this owner when perhaps we wouldn't have been so happy. And were this a brand-new use, and someone came in and said, we want to put this use in, I don't know what the town would do, but it's possible the town would say no. So the reason we're dealing with this is because of the people involved and the record they have. But we all know that a use permit runs with the land, so that if the present owner were to sell it tomorrow and it didn't do as well as it's been doing, we want to be careful about that use permit. Moreover, we know that area has to develop, whether we're going to call it the North Forty or whatever we're going to call it, it's going to develop, and we, we want to make sure that our, the goodness of these people and the goodness of this town doesn't ultimately turn around and hurt us. So that's the only thing I'm suggesting. I do think we want to give the applicant a reasonable opportunity, should it be necessary to terminate the use permit, that they have a reasonable opportunity to wind down their business. But I, I do want to say, notwithstanding our opinion of these people who are appearing before us, we just have to remember, we're not granting them a use permit, we're granting the land a use permit. And the land is an equal opportunity employer. So I just throw that out as, to think about.
Commissioner Erickson?
This is a question for the town attorney. If I understood what Commissioner O'Donnell was contemplating earlier, that one would, and I would ask to be corrected if I'm misconstruing, that a condition of the CUP would be that it could be terminated by the town for any purpose, for any reason with one year's notice. My, I'm peaked, my curiosity is peaked by that possibility, and wondering, is that possible to do legally? And if so, why wouldn't the town do that with every conditional use permit?
Let me say that this is not every use permit. This is a use permit that doesn't exist. It is someone coming before us saying, I'd like a use permit. We have the, we have the right before, with anybody, to say no. So this is different than that. Secondly, normally, people come in and say, I want to go spend some money, because I want to have this new business. And obviously, you can't say to somebody that just put a million dollars in a business or 500,000, we want a, a one-year right to terminate you, because that's just not reasonable. And I'm not saying there's any magic to one year, but I am saying this is a totally different situation. Or rather than say no, because that's the safest thing to say, we're saying yes with what I would hope would be reasonable conditions. The conditions would be, the North Forty comes up with a plan, which is inconsistent with issues, or the zoning are, yeah, the zoning, our plans for the area, not necessarily just the North Forty, comes up with plans which are inconsistent. My thought was, we could also, just to, I've been involved in too much litigation, just put in, and maybe the one-year hammers is too, too short for the third part of this. The third part of it is, the town just decides, no, we don't want to do this anymore. So they give notice now, whether, unrelated to the other two issues which you can argue about. You couldn't argue if you say, or upon, let's say, two years' notice, we can just terminate it. So I'm not arguing that we have to do that, I'm just thinking out loud, only because the goodness of these people, and I think the goodness of the town should not turn around and hurt us in the future. That's all I'm trying to deal with.
And I think to follow that up is that this application is unique. There was already contemplated by the town council many, many years ago, a 20-year period by which this use would then go away or come into conformance. The huge distinction between this request tonight is that there is an application by the town pending for what amounts to a rezoning of that entire area, of which this is immediately a part of or adjacent. And certainly, in a staff's consideration to bring before you, is that concept of one of the commission's options, or ultimately council's options, would be to say, no, that's, you know, not consistent with, you know, the rezoning application for the specific plan. Or yes, and just grant a normal conditional use permit without any time considerations, and realize then there would be no ability for this commission or the council to reconsider this use if indeed something does become approved for that area immediately adjacent to them. And so staff just was coming up with, and, and commission can consider any of those options, a no or a complete CUP without conditions, and staff just thought that they would bring something back to the commission after speaking to the property owners and the Boulevard Tavern owners with this concept that they want to be a part of the discussions that the town's having, you know, with the current property owners, with the folks that want to develop it, with, you know, and, and being engaged in the process. And the thought was is to come back with a compromise whereby there is some sort of term or condition by which the town can continue to review the matter and work with the current property owners and the Boulevard Tavern owners, and work out a reasonable way for them to either continue their use or wind it down if it's determined to be incompatible with the future, what amounts to the specific plan that's pending application. So no, it wouldn't be typical, that isn't something, although I will, and, and I know this commission's done it, on any conditional use permit, when there is concern, and it's usually under health, safety, welfare issues, there are conditional use permits, and you certainly can do it, that has a condition for an annual review... for an annual review, a semi-annual review, a two-year review, if you think that there's going to be some sort of issue that somehow the police came forward or the neighbors came forward. So we're just recommending a unique condition after discussions with the property owner and the business owner to have them become part of the discussions with the town as this area gets redeveloped.
Commissioner Jensen?
I have to admit how old I am when I make this comment, but 20 years ago, I sat on the General Plan Committee. And at that time, I was writing a specific plan for the North Forty. So I would not hold my breath about when rezoning is going to occur. As I read the... When I first read the staff report, I thought, "Why would they agree to that? Why would the applicant agree to that? Seems kind of funny." But I guess you've had continuing negotiations and you think that's what you should do. But as I read the condition that's proposed, the only thing it does is say, "Every two years, the staff is going to look at your business and decide whether we've done anything with the North Forty or not. Report those findings to the Planning Commission and then it's up to the Planning Commission whether or not to hold a public hearing." Planning Commission doesn't have to do anything. It could say, "No, we don't want to do anything." And if there's no North Forty plan, there would presumably be no reason to do anything. So while I respect all the litigation that Commissioner O'Donnell has been in, I think it's rather innocuous and maybe too ambitious, given if anybody, all you people were at the January 9th Town Council Planning Commission meeting on the North Forty, I don't think there's going to be a plan anytime soon. So to me, as long as the property owner thinks that condition four is okay, I think the Planning Commission has discretion whether to even hold a hearing, so I'm fine with it.
Commissioner Bushwa?
I'll defer to Commissioner O'Donnell if he had a direct response to that.
I just wanted to be very careful. We have the Grosvenor people who are spending a lot of money and a lot of time trying to develop that property. And you may recall, I had some sharp words at that last joint meeting we had. But I would be the last to say the Grosvenor is wasting their money. So when we talk about, this will go on for the next 20 years, we might as well just ask them to leave town. And I don't think that's a good idea. So I think we have to be careful in our comments because it could sound like we're prejudging an applicant. And so pessimism is a... Well, enough said.
Can I respond? I have... My comments had nothing to do with Grosvenor, nor do I consider them in developing policy, land use policy for the town of Las Gatas. I understand that Commissioner O'Donnell has a different viewpoint on that. But I'm just relating my experience in working on a plan for the North Forty and my experience at the meeting and what I think a timeline might be. Grosvenor can do what Grosvenor is going to do, but I don't think the town policy ought to be shaped depending upon what they might or might not do.
Okay. Commissioner Bushwa?
So I, you know, I broached this topic early on with my question. And the reason I'm feeling that that's not a necessary step is because we're making a decision tonight on whether or not we feel that's compatible land use. And until zoning changes or a specific plan changes, I don't know what would happen to change that decision. So to have staff even just go through the effort of reviewing that every two years, we're making a decision. If we don't think it's a compatible use now, then let's deny it. But if we do, until some zoning changes, until we get a specific plan, until there's some impetus, I don't see the point of reevaluating it every two years. So that's where I was coming from with this. And I would be open to review to protect us from future owners that may not be as diligent as these owners. You know, the typical review that they're in compliance with ABC, that the police don't have any problems with them, you know, those sorts of reviews, I'm fine with. But the compatibility of use one, it just, it doesn't make sense to my mind, so.
Okay. Any other comments? Commissioner O'Donnell?
If you said that we would review it for its compatibility with the surrounding uses and/or the North Forty plan, not... And you don't have to say every two years, but that they can review it upon notice or whatever, it could be six months' notice or 100, whatever it is, then you wouldn't have to have these automatic hearings, but you'd have the right to notice hearing. And the staff could then say, you know, "We have adopted the North Forty plan," or, "Not only have we not adopted the North Forty plan, but we're going to, it's going to be developed in pieces." And that's what's going on. And now we think the property in the immediate area really wants to develop and the use the town really likes that is incompatible with this. And for that reason, we'd like to give notice and terminate. I wouldn't want us to be able to do all those things. That's all I'm saying. But I would agree with Commissioner Bushwa, there's no use having motions that are unnecessary. So you don't have to say you have a review every two years. You could say, I guess, you have a review when the staff believes the facts have changed. And then the staff can make a report as to why, and if you want to, you can limit it. The uses now, it's contemplated, because I think it'd have to be contemplated, are inconsistent with this use, or the North Forty plan or something like it has been adopted and it turns out to be incompatible. So you do have a standard there. So that's what I would suggest.
Okay. Commissioner Erickson?
I guess I would be generally in agreement with Commissioner Bushwa and Commissioner O'Donnell. I don't see the need to put a specific time, one year, two years, whatever it is, to review to something similar. The other thing I would say, and I don't believe that Commissioner O'Donnell would intend this, but I'm a little bit uncomfortable with the breadth, with the broad kind of thing that he was suggesting earlier, that virtually for any reason, the town could exercise a right to do that. It seems like to me that if the town is granting a conditional use permit and acknowledges that there's a use that's permitted in the area, that there should be some reason and some findings that the town should need to conclude that would suggest that they would have a basis to terminate. And out of respect for the property, the owners of the property and the owner of the business for which one is being, for which one the town, for which the town is granting a conditional use permit. So that's, that makes me uncomfortable a little bit because it seems to me it gives the town too broad discretion. But I don't believe that's what Commissioner O'Donnell had intended.
I'm definitely not pushing that. So I would agree.
It sounds like we're all, it sounds like we have consensus that we would like the continued business to operate until there is a specific zone change in that area. And so can someone give me a motion that speaks to that effect? Or... Commissioner Jensen?
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit U-11-018 based upon the findings that are contained on page two, well, actually, page four of our staff report under C, that the proposed uses of the property are essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. We've certainly heard that they are desirable based on the testimony we've had this evening. The proposed uses will not impair the integrity or character of the zone. They will not. There is really no conflicting business or use around there. The proposed use would not be detrimental to public safety or general health, safety or general welfare. We haven't heard anything to suggest that this proposed use would harm any of those interests. The proposed use of the property are in harmony with the various elements and objectives of the general plan and purposes of the town code, and they are. So with those findings, we could approve a conditional use permit. I would move, as part of my motion in adopting the conditional use permit, that we not adopt condition three as suggested by the town. My suggested alternative would be that upon adoption or within one year of adoption of a specific plan of the North Forty, North Forty specific plan, that the town may review this conditional use permit.
And do you mean condition number four, correct? The two-year review?
The two-year review, I'm sorry. Condition three, four, whatever it is.
Condition four, okay.
So again, my suggested compromise is that upon adoption or within one year of adoption of a North Forty specific plan, the town may review the conditional use permit granted to this business.
Okay. Now, we do have questions from staff?
Well, actually, I need a correction of our report and then clarification of the motion. I know the first page of the report says recommendations to approve, but actually further in the report, it's a recommendation to approve to town council.
Oh, this goes to town council? Okay. This is only a recommendation?
Yeah.
Okay. So my motion is to recommend.
Okay. Do I have a second to the motion? Or are there questions then?
I'd like to clarify. Because I think what I heard Commissioner O'Donnell suggest was that it's not just the adoption of the North Forty specific plan, but at staff's discretion, if there are other changes or potential changes that they feel would affect the use, they could then bring it to us as well. I'm just wondering if the maker of the motion purposely excluded that or is open to that?
I purposely excluded it, and if that means the death of the motion, so be it.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Do I have a second to the motion? Okay. So then the motion dies. Can... Okay. Commissioner O'Donnell, would you... Or Commissioner Erickson? I saw both hands. Who would like to?
I'll defer.
Actually, a question for staff first. In condition number seven, under entertainment, then the last sentence that I didn't get to ask before we rushed to the earlier motion, the last sentence says, "This conditional use permit shall be subject to the live entertainment policy when the policy is adopted by the town." It's not clear to me that that should be part of the conditions of approval because that assumes that whatever entertainment policy, potentially assumes that whatever entertainment policy the town council would eventually adopt, that in that policy, the town council wouldn't do exactly the same thing they've done with the alcohol policy, which would say, "We're going to grandfather whatever entertainment is already in an existing CUP" in perfect, or some other language. So I'm not sure how we could anticipate. I don't know that a conditional use permit could put a limitation on a policy which has not been adopted by the town council.
If you say "comply" and the ordinance says you're grandfathered, you comply by being grandfathered.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell.
So Commissioner Erickson, did you want to make a motion or would you like to defer to Commissioner O'Donnell?
I would probably, Commissioner Erickson would do it. I will try. So I would move that we recommend to the town council that the conditional use permit be granted.
Myself, it looks like. I would recommend, move that we recommend to the town council that the conditional use permit be approved and that the, that they find the necessary conditions, which are set forth on exhibit two, one through four, subject to the conditions recommended by staff, except that paragraph four, the two-year review, would be altered and changed so that there would not be an automatic review, but that staff, upon its finding or determination that the zoning in the immediate area and/or the North Forty is adopted such that it is, that such change is inconsistent with the ongoing use under this conditional use permit. And if that is made, and then ultimately, I suppose that's referred to the planning commissioner, whoever it's referred to, and if that finding is made, then the applicant, the user, the owner of the conditional use permit, be given not less than one year's notice of the cessation and termination of the use permit. So that would be the motion.
Any questions to this? Okay. And do I have a second?
May I ask a...
Okay.
May I ask a procedural question of the chair? If I want, should I second the motion first and then ask the maker of the chair?
No, you should ask...
Maker of the motion to consider an amendment, or should we consider an amendment before the second?
You should ask any changes now, otherwise you won't know what you're seconding.
Okay. So would the maker of the motion consider a change in condition number nine that would limit the deliveries to 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM and a change in condition number 10 that would limit the trash recycling from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM?
Absolutely.
I'd be happy to second the motion.
Okay. So we have a motion changing condition number four, condition number nine, and condition number 10. Any other questions or clarifications necessary? Commissioner Jensen?
Your motion is for a recommendation to town council, correct?
That's what I understood we were supposed to do.
Yeah. I just didn't hear you say it, so I was making sure.
Oh, I believe I said it, but if I didn't, I meant to say it.
Any other questions or clarifications? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. The motion passes unanimously. And because this is a recommendation to town council, there are no appeal rights. And do we have a date when this is put on their calendar or it will just be noticed?
Tentatively scheduled for February 21st.
Okay. Okay. Okay, commissioners, we are now at agenda item number four, election of chair and vice chair. As you know, we rotate annually. And so it is my pleasure to nominate my vice chair as the chair for 2012. I think Commissioner Jensen has a unique perspective, as she mentioned, in that she has worked with the General Plan Committee as well as a previous planning commission. And so I think the perspective of having that experience as well as the ongoing experience that we have now is unique. And I just want to thank you for the valuable help you've been giving me this year. So I nominate Commissioner Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Bushwa, any comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Okay. And we now have a nomination for vice chair. Commissioner Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for your nice, very nice comments. It's been a pleasure working with you. And I know that the rest of the commissioners appreciate the great work that you've done for us over a very difficult year. Thank you very much. It is my pleasure and honor to nominate Commissioner Erickson to be vice chair. He has ably commented and written notes to me over the course of the year to help with the vice chairmanship. He has experience in planning and he's very thoughtful about all of the applications and I think he will bring a great perspective and addition. And I look forward to the support from the other commissioners and to his help over the course of the next year. So I nominate Commissioner Erickson.
Great. And do I have a second? Commissioner, tell us four.
I will second that motion and I heartily agree. He has definitely enlivened all of our perspectives.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? This motion passes unanimously. Congratulations to the both of you. Commissioner Erickson, or shall I say, can I call him vice chair now? Or Vice Chair Erickson?
So I would like to reiterate what Chair Jensen said, that I think you've done an exceptional job this year as chair of the commission. There's been no small number of controversial, difficult issues. So you drew a very short straw as opposed to a long straw, but you handled it with grace, with elegance, with patience and with fortitude over the course of the year. So we would not have done as good a job as commissioners in my judgment without you as chair.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Ms. Bailey, report from Community Development?
Yes, I would just like to report that on January 17th, the town council introduced the ordinance for 135 Riviera Terrace to approve that housing development.
Okay. And other commission matters? Okay. This meeting's adjourned.